... One Nation, Under God, Indivisible, with Liberty and Justice for All.
Roll call please.
Mr. Alt?
Here.
Mr. Beistel?
Here.
Mrs. Love?
Here.
Mr. Polakowski?
Here.
Mr. Benz?
Here.
Kaylee Burchus?
This is all.
Jay? Huh? Oh, these are the wrong ones.
Jake Smithman.
Jake Smithman. And Julie Donovan?
Julie Donovan.
Julie Donovan. Julie Donovan.
I have no citizen comment cards, so we'll proceed to the reorganization portion of the meeting. This time, we'll entertain nominations for temporary chairperson. Do I hear any nominations for temporary chairperson from the holdover board members? It has to be one of the five holdovers.
I nominate Mike.
Mr. Benz is nominated by Mr. Alt. Any other nominations for temporary chairperson? We entertain a motion to close the nominations for temporary chairperson from the five holdovers, please.
I make that motion.
Mr. Polakowski, second.
Second.
Mr. Beistel, those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. All those in favor of Mr. Benz signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carried. Mr. Benz?
Thank you. Reading our certification of elections. County of Westmoreland Certificate of Election. We the undersigned members of the county Board of Elections of said county hereby certify that after tabulating the votes cast at the municipal election held on the 7th day of November 2017, in said county, it appears that Gail Rhodes was duly elected to the office of school director-at-large for a term of four years in the Southmoreland School District in the county afore said. We the undersigned members of the county Board of Elections of said county hereby certify that after tabulating the votes cast at the municipal election held on the 7th day of November 2017, in said county, it appears that Charles Frye was duly elected to the office of school director-at-large for a term of four years in the Southmoreland School District in the county afore said. County of Westmoreland Certificate of Election, we the undersigned members of the county Board of Elections of said county hereby certify that after tabulating the votes cast at the municipal election held on the 7th day of November 2017, in said county, it appears that Heather Trillo Smith was duly elected to the office of school director-at-large for a term of four years in the Southmoreland School District in the county afore said. And County of Westmoreland Certificate of Election, we the undersigned members of the county Board of Elections of said county hereby certify that after tabulating the votes cast at the municipal election held on the 7th day of November 2017, in said county, it appears that James Carson was duly elected to the office of school director-at-large for a term of four years in the Southmoreland School District in the county afore said.
Having said that, the list of all elected school board members at this time would now include Mr. Kenneth Alt, Mr. James Beistel, Mr. Michael Benz, Mr. James Carson, Mr. Charles Frye, Mrs. Amy Love, Mr. Jason Polakowski, Mrs. Gail Rhodes, and Mrs. Heather Smith. This time, I'd invite Judge Moore to come forward and administer the oath of office, please.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Good evening, everyone, and Merry Christmas, everybody.
Merry Christmas.
It's a pleasure to be here to have an opportunity to swear those in who are going to serve our community. Peggy, I'll turn it over to you. How do you want to do this? You want to bring them all up front?
Yeah, bring them all up front. That's great.
Have some up front?
Hey, you can take them over so that we can take them inside.
The most important part is you.
How about, I understand. I destroyed it here yesterday.
For the Board of School Directors of the Southmoreland School District, the oath of office as school director. Please raise your right hand. I, Heather Trillo Smith.
Aye, Heather Trillo Smith.
Do solemnly swear that I will support, obey, defend, the Constitution of the United States, and the Constitution of this commonwealth.
The Constitution of the United States.
And I will discharge the duties of my office with fidelity. For the Board of School Directors of the Southmoreland School District, the oath of office as school director. Please raise your right hand. I, Charles Frye.
Aye, Charles Frye.
Do solemnly swear that I will support, obey, defend, the Constitution of the United States, and the Constitution of this commonwealth. And I will discharge the duties of my office with fidelity. For the Board of School Directors of the Southmoreland School District, the oath of office as school director. Please raise your right hand. I, Charles Frye.
Aye, Charles Frye.
Do solemnly swear that I will support, obey, defend, the Constitution of the United States, and the Constitution of this commonwealth. And I will discharge the duties of my office with fidelity. For the Board of School Directors of the Southmoreland School District, the oath of office as school director. Please raise your right hand. I, James Carson.
Aye, James Carson.
Do solemnly swear that I will support, obey, defend, the Constitution of the United States, and the Constitution of this commonwealth. And I will discharge the duties of my office with fidelity. With great pleasure, I announce that these four individuals are sworn as the school directors for the Southmoreland School District. Congratulations.
Judge.
Yes?
Judge, have each one of them sign the oath of service.
Yes, no problem. Why is he grinning?
It's nice to see him.
I had to cover that up with a rag. It's big rotter.
We did, also.
Why did that, didn't that one?
Hi, Mr. Moore.
Good.
You too.
Merry Christmas.
Thank you.
Merry Christmas.
Election of President by a term of one year?
Nomination for Board, nomination for President?
I nominate Amy Love.
Mr. Alt nominates Ms. Love. Any other nominations?
I nominate Mr. Benz.
Mrs. Rhodes nominates Mr. Benz. Any more nominations? Do we have a motion to close nominations?
So be it.
Motion by Mr. Beistel, second.
Second.
Second by Mr. Polakowski. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed? Motion passes nine to zero. Roll call, please.
Mr. Alt votes for?
Uh, Ms. Love.
Mr. Beistel votes for?
Mrs. Love.
Mr. Benz votes for?
Mr. Benz.
Mr. Carson votes for?
Mrs. Love.
Mr. Frye votes for?
Mr. Benz.
Mrs. Love votes for?
Mrs. Love.
Mr. Polakowski votes for?
Mrs. Love.
Mrs. Rhodes votes for?
Mr. Benz.
Mrs. Smith votes for?
Mr. Benz.
Mrs. Love, who's the new president? Congratulations.
Congratulations, Mrs. Love.
Election of Vice President for a term of one year?
I nominate Mike Benz.
Wait, who did?
Oh, I'm sorry. I thought you were ready.
Who voted? Who nominated?
Ken nominated Mr. Benz.
I nominate Mrs. Rhodes. So we have two nominations, Mr. Benz and Mrs. Rhodes.
Do I have a motion to close nominations? Are there any others?
Move to close nominations?
I make that motion to close nominations.
Second?
Second.
Roll call? Oh, all in favor?
Aye.
Roll call, vote.
Roll call? Mr. Alt votes for?
Mr. Benz.
Mr. Beistel votes for?
Mrs. Rhodes.
Mr. Benz votes for?
Mrs. Rhodes.
Mr. Benson votes for?
Mrs. Rhodes.
Mr. Carson votes for?
Mrs. Rhodes.
Mr. Frye votes for?
Mrs. Rhodes.
Mrs. Love votes for?
Mrs. Rhodes.
Mr. Polakowski votes for?
Mr. Benson.
Mrs. Rhodes votes for?
Mr. Benz.
Mrs. Rhodes is our new vice president.
Congratulations, Mrs. Rhodes.
Election of Board Treasurer for a term of one year?
Before we do this, we're going to defer to the solicitor for a legal opinion. It is actually that you do your election in the springtime to take effect on July 1st. Last summer, you voted to appoint Mr. Robert Colaro, the resident member. The fact that he is no longer a member does not disqualify him from completing his term. So your choice is to leave it alone, and he would continue to serve unless he would resign. But you also have the authority, because it is an appointment at will, to open the position. So you don't have to do an election tonight, but you could.
Ask for a motion that reflects the will of the Board.
Can I have a motion to reflect the will of the Board?
Do you want a motion to keep Bob Colaro as the treasurer of the Board? I make that motion.
Second. All in favor?
Roll call.
Roll call? Mr. Alt?
Yes.
Mr. Beistel?
Yes.
Mr. Benz?
Yes.
Mr. Carson?
No.
Mr. Frye?
Yes.
Mrs. Love?
Yes.
Mr. Polakowski?
Yes.
Mrs. Rhodes?
Yes.
Mrs. Smith?
Yes.
Treasurer remains, Mr. Colaro. Legislative Chairperson.
Are there any nominations?
Are there any nominations for Legislative Chairperson?
I'd nominate Gail Rhodes.
Any other nominations?
Make a motion to close nominations.
Second?
Second.
Roll call? Oh, all in favor?
Aye.
Roll call, vote.
Roll call? Mr. Alt votes for?
Mr. Benz.
Mr. Beistel votes for?
Mrs. Rhodes.
Mr. Benz votes for?
Mrs. Rhodes.
Mr. Carson votes for?
Mrs. Rhodes.
Mr. Frye votes for?
Mrs. Rhodes.
Mrs. Love votes for?
Mrs. Rhodes.
Mr. Polakowski votes for?
Mr. Benz.
Mrs. Rhodes votes for?
Mrs. Rhodes.
Mr. Smith votes for?
Mrs. Rhodes.
Mrs. Rhodes is our new vice president.
Congratulations, Mrs. Rhodes.
Election of Board Treasurer for a term of one year?
Before we do this, we're going to defer to the solicitor for a legal opinion. It is actually that you do your election in the springtime to take effect on July 1st. Last summer, you voted to appoint Mr. Robert Colaro, the resident member. The fact that he is no longer a member does not disqualify him from completing his term. So your choice is to leave it alone, and he would continue to serve unless he would resign. But you also have the authority, because it is an appointment at will, to open the position. So you don't have to do an election tonight, but you could.
Ask for a motion that reflects the will of the Board.
Can I have a motion to reflect the will of the Board?
Do you want a motion to keep Bob Colaro as the treasurer of the Board? I make that motion.
Second. All in favor?
Roll call.
Roll call? Mr. Alt?
Yes.
Mr. Beistel?
Yes.
Mr. Benz?
Yes.
Mr. Carson?
No.
Mr. Frye?
Yes.
Mrs. Love?
Yes.
Mr. Polakowski?
Yes.
Mrs. Rhodes?
Yes.
Mrs. Smith?
Yes.
Treasurer remains, Mr. Colaro. Legislative Chairperson.
Are there any nominations?
Are there any nominations for Legislative Chairperson?
I'd nominate Gail Rhodes.
Any other nominations?
Make a motion to close nominations.
Second?
Second.
Roll call? Oh, all in favor?
Aye.
Roll call, vote.
Roll call? Mr. Alt votes for?
Mr. Benz.
Mr. Beistel votes for?
Mrs. Rhodes.
Mr. Benz votes for?
Mrs. Rhodes.
Mr. Carson votes for?
Mrs. Rhodes.
Mrs. Love votes for?
Mrs. Rhodes.
Mr. Polakowski votes for?
Mr. Benson.
Mr. Polakowski votes for?
Mr. Benson.
Mrs. Rhodes votes for?
Mr. Benson.
Mrs. Rhodes is our new vice president.
Congratulations, Mrs. Rhodes.
Election of Board Treasurer for a term of one year?
Before we do this, we're going to defer to the solicitor for a legal opinion. It is actually that you do your election in the springtime to take effect on July 1st. Last summer, you voted to appoint Mr. Robert Colaro, the resident member. The fact that he is no longer a member does not disqualify him from completing his term. So your choice is to leave it alone, and he would continue to serve unless he would resign. But you also have the authority, because it is an appointment at will, to open the position. So you don't have to do an election tonight, but you could.
Ask for a motion that reflects the will of the Board.
Can I have a motion to reflect the will of the Board?
Do you want a motion to keep Bob Colaro as the treasurer of the Board? I make that motion.
Second. All in favor?
Roll call.
Roll call? Mr. Alt?
Yes.
Mr. Beistel?
Yes.
Mr. Benz?
Yes.
Mr. Carson?
Yes.
Mrs. Love?
Yes.
Mr. Polakowski?
Yes.
Mrs. Rhodes?
Yes.
Mrs. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Benson?
Yes.
Mr. Polakowski?
Yes.
Mrs. Love?
No.
Mrs. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Benson?
Yes.
Mr. Benson?
Yes.
Mrs. Rose?
Yes.
Mr. Benson? 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 Mrs. Love votes for?
Mrs. Love.
Mr. Polakowski votes for?
Mrs. Love.
Mrs. Rhodes votes for?
Mr. Benz.
Mrs. Smith votes for?
Mr. Benz.
Mrs. Love?
Yes.
Mr. Polakowski?
Yes.
Mrs. Rhodes votes for?
Mr. Benz.
Mrs. Smith votes for?
Mr. Benz.
Mrs. Love, who's the new president? Congratulations.
Congratulations, Mrs. Love.
Election of Vice President for a term of one year?
I nominate Mike Benz.
Wait, who did?
Oh, I'm sorry. I thought you were ready.
Who voted? Who nominated?
Ken nominated Mr. Benz.
I nominate Mrs. Rhodes. So we have two nominations, Mr. Benz and Mrs. Rhodes.
Do I have a motion to close nominations? Are there any others?
Move to close nominations?
I make that motion to close nominations.
Second?
Second.
Roll call? Oh, all in favor?
Aye.
Roll call, vote.
Roll call? Mr. Alt votes for?
Mr. Benz.
Mr. Beistel votes for?
Mrs. Rhodes.
Mr. Benz votes for?
Mrs. Rhodes.
Mr. Carson votes for?
Mrs. Rhodes.
Mr. Frye votes for?
Mrs. Rhodes.
Mrs. Love votes for?
Mrs. Rhodes.
Mr. Polakowski votes for?
Mr. Benz.
Mrs. Rhodes votes for?
Mrs. Rhodes.
Mr. Smith votes for?
Mrs. Rhodes.
Mrs. Rhodes is our new vice president.
Congratulations, Mrs. Rhodes.
Election of Board Treasurer for a term of one year?
Before we do this, we're going to defer to the solicitor for a legal opinion. It is actually that you do your election in the springtime to take effect on July 1st. Last summer, you voted to appoint Mr. Robert Colaro, the resident member. The fact that he is no longer a member does not disqualify him from completing his term. So your choice is to leave it alone, and he would continue to serve unless he would resign. But you also have the authority, because it is an appointment at will, to open the position. So you don't have to do an election tonight, but you could.
Ask for a motion that reflects the will of the Board.
Can I have a motion to reflect the will of the Board?
Do you want a motion to keep Bob Colaro as the treasurer of the Board? I make that motion.
Second. All in favor?
Roll call.
Roll call? Mr. Alt?
Yes.
Mr. Beistel?
Yes.
Mr. Benz?
Yes.
Mr. Carson?
No.
Mr. Frye?
Yes.
Mrs. Love?
Yes.
Mr. Polakowski?
Yes.
Mrs. Rhodes?
Yes.
Mrs. Smith?
Yes.
Treasurer remains, Mr. Colaro. Legislative Chairperson.
Are there any nominations?
Are there any nominations for Legislative Chairperson?
I'd nominate Gail Rhodes.
Any other nominations?
Make a motion to close nominations.
Second?
Second.
Roll call? Oh, all in favor?
Aye.
Roll call, vote.
Roll call? Mr. Alt votes for?
Mr. Benz.
Mr. Beistel votes for?
Can we have a motion?
I'll make that motion.
Second?
Second.
Discussion?
I know that there has been discussion amongst some of us of having one meeting a month. Is this the appropriate time that we bring that up? Would it be appropriate now to, well, you have this motion right now that you have to vote on? Or should I make a motion?
Well, at this point in time, we discuss the calendar and if, and we'll have that motion. And if the board is of, of, on a mind to have one meeting a month, then this, this would be voted down. And there would be an alternate, uh, calendar brought up then.
So I should make my discussion?
Yes.
Okay. Well, we, the, the people that I've talked to and from my observations over the years is, you know, we've had a few this year that worked out rather well. And, uh, we can obviously have more meetings should the, uh, agenda become overwhelming or we have a subject such as a budget that's going to take a lot of time, then we just advertise for another meeting. But having done it this year, it seems to be a successful thing. And, uh, I'd like to see us go with one meeting a month unless we need to make two meetings a month.
I prefer the way we did it this year. That way if we have a heavy month and we just go ahead with two meetings, you know, if we just do one meeting a month and...
Second motion, Jason?
Yeah, the way it is. And then if we need to cancel one because we have a light month with nothing on it, then just cancel it.
Second motion.
Question about the meetings in May and June. We'll be working on the budget at that time. Should we, um, move that A-17 meeting to the next Thursday of the month? Or do you think if, same way in June? Or do you think we should keep them this way? And then if we needed an additional meeting, just have it at that time? Uh, just throwing it out there for discussion, see what you guys think. Because I think we did have to add meetings last year, uh, both in May and June. Because we don't know what we're going to be getting into with the budget, so, um...
When we need a meeting to bring the business to hand?
Correct.
We can always make another meeting that month. You'd have one meeting a month until we have to do that.
So my thing was adding, actually adding it, uh, either week, week back, even at the 21st, back a week and also May, in other words, have it later, have it next Thursday.
When do we, when do we...
I guess we could always add it if we needed it.
Before June 30th?
You have to have 30 days between the meeting in May that approves-
The meeting in June.
The tentative judgment, uh, tentative budget, budget, and the meeting in June to approve the final budget.
So May 24th and June 28th would accomplish that, David, which is what she's proposing? As does the, the current draft.
As does the current draft.
Right.
Question. Now, let me get this straight. Jason, you want two meetings a month and not one meeting a month? And have a meeting when we desire to have it because of the business?
Yes.
Huh?
Yes, like it's on here. Then if we need to cancel it, we'll cancel it, like we did it this year.
I'd like to, ah, this is me getting confused again. I'd like to only have one meeting a month until we need, so I cancel my second. As we need it, we'll, we'll add meetings. You understand what I'm saying?
Well, we have a motion, a second, so we would vote no. You would vote no to the, to the motion, if, if that's your feeling.
The motion that's on the floor is to approve what you proposed-
Yes.
Two meetings a month except for July and December.
Right. Right.
So the motion is for two meetings a month?
Yeah, the motion right now is for two meetings a month except for July and December. And another thing that Mr. Benz actually pointed out to me earlier today, the October 18th meeting does conflict with the PSBA Leadership Conference as well, um, which, and this year we canceled that one, if you recall, so... See if there's other discussion.
Any other discussion?
So if we vote on it the way it is, you would have two planned meetings a month, but if we decide we don't need two meetings, we could always cancel that second meeting.
Correct. Or if you want to amend to consider your comment, then you would also want to vote nay.
Roll call?
Okay, so for two meetings a month?
As printed.
As printed. Uh, Mr. Alt?
No.
Mr. Beistel?
No.
Mr. Carson? Mr. Benz?
Yes.
Mr. Fry?
Yes.
Mr. Polakowski?
Yes.
Mrs. Rhodes? No. Mrs. Smith?
Yes.
Mrs. Love?
No.
Five-four, yes, has it?
Okay, the motion passes five to four.
Newspaper of general circulation.
It's recommended that the board designate the Daily Courier, whose office is located at 127 to 129 Apple Street, Connelsville, PA, as the daily newspaper of general circulation, in which district legal advertisements will be placed in accordance with Section 10 of the Public School Code and School District Policy Guide Number Five.
Do we have a motion?
So be it.
Second?
Second.
Discussion? Roll call?
Mr. Beistel?
Yes.
Mr. Carson?
Yes.
Mr. Benz?
Yes.
Mr. Fry?
Yes.
Mr. Polakowski?
Yes.
Mrs. Rhodes?
Yes.
Mrs. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Alt?
Yes.
Mrs. Love?
Yes. Minutes of the November 9th.
Motion carries.
Sorry?
It's all right, go ahead.
Minutes of the November 9th and 16th meetings.
It's recommended that the board approve the November 9th, 2017 discussion meeting minutes and the November 16th, 2017 voting meeting minutes.
Motion?
Make a motion.
Second.
First by Mr. Polakowski, second by Mr. Fry. Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Bills payable report?
It's recommended that the board approve the board's, uh, the board's summary report. The Treasury's report is not available.
Motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Dis- discussion? Roll call?
Mr. Carson?
Yes.
Mr. Fry?
Yes.
Mr. Benz?
Yes.
Mr. Polakowski?
Yes.
Mrs. Rhodes?
Yes.
Mrs. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Alt?
Yes.
Mr. Beistel?
Yes.
Mrs. Love?
Yes.
Motion carries, nine zero.
For those that haven't.
For those that haven't, reports? Student report?
Congratulations to November's Scotty Scholar, Morgan Conti. Three 11th grade girls have been chosen for the Seton Hill Women in Science Awards. Jenna Conti received the award for chemistry. Alyssa Kaiser received the award for biology. And Maggie Moore received the award for mathematics. The award ceremony will be held December 13th at Seton Hill University. The Alpha Quiz Bowl team has finished their second round at Mount Pleasant High School. Varsity team's record is 4-2 and the JV is 5-1. Their last round will be January 24th. For YEA, the Lunch Bunch will be held Wednesday, December 15th at SPC. Light Up Night was held at the Scotto Gazebo on Saturday, December 2nd. And Breakfast with Santa will be held at SES on Saturday, December 9th. The primary artistic support classes will be visiting the coffee shop at the high school on December 20th to participate in transition activities. Each primary student will order and pay for an item of choice and be paired up with a high school learning support student to assist them. They'll also enjoy their treats with our coffee shop workers. Also, the annual Santa's Shop will be held the week the holiday break starts. All items are new or slightly used and are free. Every high school student given the opportunity to shop and the learning support students will wrap the gifts. Ms. Farrell's class is in charge of setting up the shop. The coffee shop also supports and funds a door decorating contest among the high school staff. Each staff who chooses to participate is asked to assign students to decorate their classroom doors. The winners will receive free coffee and goodies from the coffee shop. Coffee shop hosted a Thanksgiving feast for all learning support students. The students prepared the menu, wrote their grocery list, cooked and prepared the meal along with the table settings and cleanup. This was done to teach life and transition skills as per the students' IEP. And Roman Karns and Cody Pickens are both chosen as the Central Westmoreland Career Technology Center's Student of the Month for October.
See, you have the CTC report?
I just have another reminder that the annual, um, awards banquet is next Wednesday. I think everybody's gotten their invitations. If not, um, get in contact with Peggy and, and get that taken care of. That concludes my report.
Hi, Dr. Harrowport for the WIU PSDA Liaison Report. Superintendent's report.
I had a report on here and it seems to have disappeared, so I wanted to roll it. A couple of things since the, the, the last meeting. Peggy and I had an opportunity to travel to Grove City for a federal programs academy. Um, we're helping out with federal programs this year, so we're learning, uh, what needs to be turned in certain dates, certain times. It was pretty enlightening for both of us. Um, winter sports is underway, uh, so we wish all of our sports teams the best of luck. Uh, during the last, uh, week, three days, I got to spend, uh, at the Western Pennsylvania Forum for School Superintendents. Uh, the topic was very timely. It was, um, leading and managing in an era of social media. The good part of the, uh, of the program was we learned about how to use social media effectively to promote our schools and its programs. Uh, the bad part, uh, at least for me, was we, uh, heard from, um, FBI agents and we, uh, we learned about, um, um, some terrible kinds of child abuse that may be happening in our own backyards. We learned about human child trafficking, uh, that does occur right here in Western Pennsylvania. Um, and we learned about, um, marginalization and radicalization of, of students and how to intervene before those students, uh, become to a point where they're going to do some violent things. Uh, we heard some, some very disturbing things, uh, that 11, 12, 13, 14-year-old kids are doing and some even more disturbing things about what's happening, uh, to some of those kids at the hands of adults and in some cases, at the hands of their families. So it was certainly, um, an eye-opening couple of days that we spent with the FBI. Um, and that concludes my report.
Thank you.
Oh, one more, one more thing, excuse me. The other thing is I just wanted to thank the South Boylan community on behalf of, uh, some of our teachers who organized the Mustache Club. That was a fundraiser, uh, where, uh, students and teachers could buy paper mustaches. Some of the adults grew mustaches, uh, raised over $4,000 for the family of a young lady in one of our buildings who's suffering, uh, from a very serious illness. So, uh, thanks to the South Boylan family for the compassion and love that they showed to this family. And now that really does conclude my report. Yes. Personnel.
Solicitor's report?
Like this, uh, on Friday afternoon, I have received a telephone call from, um, Attorney John Tuohy, who continues to represent, um, Scottsdale Bank and Trust, uh, in regards to the property that is at, uh, on Broadway across from the, um, Sheets. And, um, at a couple of minutes to five today, I received an email, uh, and I will hand out to you a copy of that letter, um, basically requesting, uh, the school board to, again, take a look at the possibility of exonerating taxes, uh, for that property. Because of the lateness of the hour, I didn't feel that I had adequate time within which to prepare a resolution for you, uh, but I would, um, highly recommend, uh, to the president and superintendent that this be put on the agenda for, uh, January's, uh, discussion meeting so that, uh, it could be given more thorough treatment. Uh, it appears that the impetus for this is that the national organization, uh, has become, um, more favorably disposed to, uh, being involved in a transfer of the title, um, to, um, solve a lot of legal issues. Right now, um, Scottsdale Borough is in litigation with the National AERIE, A-E-R-I-E, um, over various issues. And, um, this would, um, open up the possibility, perhaps, of the, uh, building being demolished, uh, there being, um, water, uh, issues dealt with by the Jacobs Creek watershed and, uh, eventually the property, um, used for a, uh, parking lot. Uh, the interested purchaser, uh, is Mr. Timothy Carson of Scottsdale Borough. Um, and, uh, that's pretty much a, a short comment on the substance of the letter. Uh, I don't have, um, completely calculated the amount of taxes involved, but, um, the last time this was entertained, it was done with the, uh, idea of mutual, uh, agreement among all the taxing entities to, uh, either abate part or all, to exonerate part or all the taxes. So, um, I just wanted you to be informed of that, um, because of the, uh, Christmas and everything. I didn't want you to get it in your board packet, uh, you know, a few days before the next meeting and then, um, sort of be taken by surprise. The other very brief comment is that, um, I've been exchanging, um, correspondence with our appointed counsel, Susan Roberts, about the litigation concerning, um, the, um, transfer of entities issue in which the school district is involved. And, um, I will try to prepare a summary for the new board members to bring you up to speed on that, um, so as not to have to take up, uh, a lot of time with the other board members repeating stuff that they've already heard too many times from me, um, save a little bit of time that way. So, um, with the exception of, I'll have a comment, uh, if there's an executive session on personnel, uh, that would conclude my report. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, there's no old business, so new business, overnight field trips?
It's recommended that the board approve the following overnight trips. Riverside High School in Elwood City, Pennsylvania, for the girls' basketball team to participate in a tournament on December 28th and 29th at no additional cost to the district. Normandy, Ohio, on December 8th and 9th, for the varsity wrestling team to participate in a tournament at no additional cost to the district. South Fayette on December 15th and 16th, for the middle school wrestling team to participate in a tournament at no additional cost to the district. And Waynesburg, February 2nd and 3rd, again, for the middle school wrestling team to participate in a tournament at no additional cost to the district.
Do we have a motion? Second?
Second.
Discussion?
Discussion?
Roll call?
Roll call?
Mr. Fry?
Yes.
Mr. Benz?
Yes.
Mr. Polakowski?
Yes.
Mrs. Rhodes?
Yes.
Mrs. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Alt?
Yes.
Mr. Beistel? Mr. Beistel?
Yes.
I hear a vote?
Yes.
Sorry.
Mr. Carson?
Yes.
Mrs. Love?
Yes.
Motion carries, nine zero.
Entertain a motion to recess to executive session.
I'd like to entertain a motion to recess to executive session.
Under new business? Mr. Beistel has something?
Um, you know, our band has put us on the map this year. And they've really done well and they've, the students are really working hard to get this trip to Disney World. They, they're outselling everything they can to make money. They're not laying back on their duffs, waiting for somebody to give them something. I'd like to make a motion that the school districts donate them $5,000 for the trip to Disney World.
Discussion?
Second.
Second?
I'll second then.
Discussion?
Say what?
Discussion.
This is all pretty new because I don't know what we have or don't have, so...
Mr. Marnell, would you like to?
Well, the only thing I say is we're, we support everything else and there's not much that we support the band with. They're really busting their cans to go there. And I feel sure that we can come up with the money.
We're looking at you, Jim.
Can we?
We can, we can probably find the $5,000 somewhere that's-
It goes to the organization, so when they need expenses, like buses or whatever, don't go-
That's on the budget.
It's however they want to discuss.
No, I'm just asking if it's just for the kids. Lower their mountain name or whatever.
If that's the way you want to do it, but I think we ought to see that they get some-
Appointed counsel fees.
What was that, Jim?
I said, well, we'll take it out of, uh, legal fees.
Well, I said, no.
No problem there.
Especially outside counsel.
We're, we're looking at this as a one-time, uh...
Disney World trip.
Disney World trip?
That's it.
And the money would just be for like, uh, the, the general-
Dispersed between the kids so their expenses go down?
For the trip, per se.
For the trip to Disney World. I forget when they go on, Mike.
At March, I think.
Well, have up to March, or however. Talk to Mr. Harris and see what he needs it for or whatever.
Are we just going to do it this year, Butch, or are we going to do it?
Well, we'll see how they do next year. And I still, as if, if the football team was going to playoffs, we'd be sending them. Or if the basketball team goes, we send them. And here sits the band, they never hardly ask us for anything. I know they got new uniforms.
Yeah, I don't have anything against the band. We just approved all these trips for the wrestling and basketball, no cost, because they raised money to go. So, you know, it's sort of...
They're raising money too. I've, if-
Yeah, you know, they're not costing us anything, though, or...
Yeah, right.
They're all staying in PA, though. Most of them are staying in Pennsylvania.
I, I, I think, you know me, and I don't want to spend any money before it's stopped. Oh, I thank you very much, Mr. Beistel. But, uh, you know, I think when, in certain circumstances like this, it's a once-in-a-lifetime opportunity for a lot of these kids. You know, I, I think it would be a good experience for them.
If memory serves me correctly, every competition the band was in this year, they took first.
Roll call?
Mr. Benz?
abstained.
Mr. Alt?
Yes.
Mr. Beistel?
Yes.
Mr. Carson?
Yes.
Mr. Fry?
Yes.
Mr. Polakowski?
Yes.
Mrs. Rhodes?
Yes.
Mrs. Smith?
Yes.
Mrs. Love?
Yes.
Motion carries, eight and one abstain.
Can I have a motion to recess to executive session?
So be it.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Mrs. Rhodes? Personnel, personnel. Employment of kindergarten teacher.
It is recommended that the board employ Jennifer Stinet of East Huntingdon Township, Pennsylvania, as an elementary teacher to be assigned by administration at an annual salary of $42,103, which is step B1 on the salary scale.
Have a motion?
So be it.
Mr. Carson and...
Mr. Carson.
Mr. Carson, Mr. Beistel, second? Discussion?
Roll call.
Roll call?
Mr. Benz?
Yes.
Mr. Alt?
Yes.
Mr. Beistel?
Yes.
Mr. Carson?
Yes.
Mr. Fry?
Yes.
Mr. Polakowski?
Yes.
Mrs. Rhodes?
Yes.
Mrs. Smith?
Yes.
Mrs. Love?
Yes.
Motion carries, nine zero.
Sonia McNally extended leave.
It's recommended that the board grant an unpaid leave for Sonia McNally through the end of February 2018, with the caveat that the employee is responsible for benefits during her period of unpaid leave.
Motion? Mr. Rhodes, second?
Second.
Mr. Beistel? Discussion? Roll call?
Mr. Polakowski?
Yes.
Mrs. Rhodes?
Yes.
Mrs. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Alt?
Yes.
Mr. Beistel?
Yes.
Mr. Benz?
Yes.
Mr. Carson?
Yes.
Mr. Fry?
Yes.
Mrs. Love?
Yes.
Motion carries, nine zero.
Football coach.
It's recommended that the board accept the resignation of head varsity football coach, Mark Adams, effective immediately and that the board open all varsity assistant coaching positions and authorize administration to post and advertise the same.
Motion? Mr. Carson, second?
Second.
Mr. Polakowski? Discussion? Roll call?
Mrs. Rhodes?
Yes.
Mrs. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Alt?
Yes.
Mr. Beistel?
Yes, with regret.
Mr. Benz?
Yes.
Mr. Carson?
Yes.
Mr. Fry?
Yes.
Mr. Polakowski?
Yes.
Mrs. Love?
Yes.
Motion carries, nine zero.
Dr. Sanamont repayment plan.
It's recommended that the board rescind its previous approval of a tuition repayment plan for Dr. Tanis, Tanya Sanamont, and approve the resolution provided by the solicitor.
Make that motion.
Second? Mr. Fry? Discussion? Roll- Any comment from the public?
It's an agenda item, David, I mean, it's on the agenda, yes.
Roll call?
Mrs. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Alt?
Yes.
Mr. Beistel?
Yes.
Mr. Benz?
Yes.
Mr. Carson?
Yes.
Mr. Fry?
Yes.
Mr. Polakowski?
Yes.
Mrs. Rhodes?
Yes.
Mrs. Love?
Yes.
Motion carries, nine zero.
Citizens' comments?
Seeing none.
Seeing none, motion to adjourn.
So be it.
Mrs. Rhodes, second by Mr. Beistel.
Mrs. Rhodes, second by Mr. Beistel? All in favor? Opposed?
Magic, yeah.
Whoa!